Saying, you might want to wait a minute. And and pause with that, but just speak up if it's your turn to speak for a bit and they'll continue to see if we can get our individual mics at our places. So welcome all to Utah State Charter School Board Meeting. Today is May eleventh and we're in the State Board of Education offices. And we welcome those who are visiting today. And we also want to welcome AAG Olson, who is with us. Deputy Superintendent Stollings, who is with us. Uh, our USBE liaison member, um, uh, Carrie, who is with us as well. We're fortunate to have them, in addition to other meetings they attend, come to this one, but it's because they love it so much that they they can't resist. Let's start off first with Pledge of Allegiance and Member Bassett will lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'll ask Ms. Castillo, do we have any public comment? Oh, there's a phone, thank you. I just had to pay attention to Director Lambert, that's why she's nearby. Um, so just, uh, uh, we always like to kind of to remind ourselves, just to stay on track, we're going to have more discussion about our strategic plan during lunch today and the ethic at end of our meeting. But just to remind ourselves always that our mission, I just, uh, I'll read just that part, advancing quality, choice, innovation, and student success through rigorous authorizing and supportive oversight. So just a reminder that that's what we are about. Those items that we've come to some, uh, after some discussion and thinking about what do we really stand for? It's that authorizing and supportive in oversight because we believe in the children in this state and want to give them opportunities and choice and to support the schools in their work to do that as well. So, um, with that, we're gonna have, uh, we have a thought today from Member Spiker and we appreciate her sharing with us if she is ready. I know she's already tested.
Yes.
Her.
Okay.
Her look and yeah, okay.
Oh, let me just, um. Oh, okay, there we go. Okay.
Test. Okay, I'm gonna keep it on.
It's good.
As long as it's not too much, uh. Okay, great. Okay. Um, as always, it's an, uh, such an honor to be able to, um, be able to share a thought. Um, it's something that's been really resonating with me. To begin, I'd like to pose a question to all of you. And I would like for you to think back to the last moment that you experienced wonder. Take a moment, I want you to think about the last time that you experienced wonder. And I want you to keep that in the back of your mind as we continue to move through this. So I'm gonna share a video clip. Whoops, not that share. Um, I'm gonna share this video clip here in a second. I'm gonna give you a little bit of background. This is, uh, just happened two days ago. And one of my dear friends, her name is Joy Beatty, she's a kindergarten teacher, uh, municipal elementary in Weber School District. And every year, she worked with me when I was a school director at Maria Montessori Academy, so this has now been fifteen years. She hatches chicks with her kindergarteners every year. So we're gonna play this video and then I'll just have a couple thoughts, uh, to share. And, uh, yeah, and I'm hoping, please listen very carefully to the sound and, um, all that's happening in this little clip.
Cause you're matching this.
I'm already hatched.
Oh, here he comes, here he comes.
Come on, little guy. You can do it. When I barely could see his fur.
It's the feathers, huh?
Yeah, they're baby feathers. When did this one hatch? Uh, today.
His feathers are like always.
Welcome to the world. So cute.
No, can't have him.
Welcome to the world, little guy.
Aww, cute.
Welcome to the world, little guy. That sense of awe, that sense of wonder, that sense of curiosity. I think that should be at the heart of every single one of our classrooms. Also this week, Joy was engaged in KEAT assessments, end of year testing, um, saying, getting ready to say goodbye to her kindergarteners. I think that at this time of the year, it's, and often I think right now in education, we're a little lost. And sometimes we forget how important curiosity, wonder, and awe is in the work that we do. I've recently been doing some research, um, from a scholar at the University of California in Berkeley by the name of Dr. Dashir Keltner. And his research is focused in the science of awe and the importance of how we create awe in the classroom and with our students and what happens when we do that. I just wanna read a little excerpt. "Awe experiences may bring with them a host of psychological, physiological, and social effects. For example, studies have found that feelings of awe can be accompanied by heart rate changes, goosebumps, and the sensation of chills." We heard that in that video. And there is some evidence that awe might even decrease markers of chronic inflammation. This is the biggest point. When it comes to psychological effects, studies have found that awe can create a diminished sense of self in a good way, an effect known as the small self. Give people the sense that they have more available to give, increase feelings of connectedness, increase critical thinking and skepticism, and increase positive mood and decrease materialism. We, as a soc- as a society, are really screaming to be connected. And I think that as educators and leaders in, uh, um, pushing education policy forward and looking for innovative schools, this is a great opportunity for us to think about the schools that are truly, truly embracing awe, wonder, curiosity. When I think about how many teachers across the state of Utah are hatching chicks, instead they're stressed out about KEAT. So I, I hope that we have the opportunity to really think about the classrooms of this next century and what do we need as humans? I think we need more of this. We need more wonder, we need more awe, we need more curiosity to bring us back together and connect. And that's my thought, thank you.
Such a great thought, thank you so much. That, that joy of discovery and, uh, is so wonderful. I, I sometimes show students one of a little girl first going out in the rain the first time and another of a little boy who received, just had received, um, had, they just turned on his cochlear implants and he hears for the first time. Just sometimes little things that we take for granted so much that there's joy and wonder in all we do instead of being stressed about other things that we can enjoy. Just sometimes it's very small things that bring such joy and wonder and excitement. Welcome Deputy Superintendent Jones, also we're happy to have you here today. Now, welcome, we're glad to have you here. All right, so let's talk about the, um, from that, thank you so much, a, a couple of items. Uh, right, on your, you may, I'm not sure if it appears on your schedule, but I'm gonna give you a date if you don't have it, board members, that, and some of our staff as well, who maybe need to make sure that they have recorded. Uh, the NACA conference for twenty twenty-three is October twenty-three through twenty-six. And the reason we want you to know about it in, on May eleventh is so that, uh, most of you have things planned between now and next May eleventh. And we would like you to consider putting on your calendars in October, uh, the NACA conference and trying to, you know, schedule around that because we gained so much being there together and talking about the issues and things that we learned. We shared already in board meetings this year what we brought from it and it's, it's, they're compelling. Uh, we don't get from any other place from that. That conference will help us to, to grow and it's a greater opportunity. So October twenty-three through twenty-six, put that on your calendars. Here's another opportunity so that when I get to October, say, oh, I wish I'd known. Now, you know, we need to make sure, um, Member Smith, I should have said, we're excusing today too. I'm, should have recognized that as well. We'll make sure she has that for her calendar as well. I'm also going to pass around opportunity for board members to attend graduation ceremonies at our schools. And they, it's a great experience and many of you have had that experience of going to graduation. I love graduation, so I so appreciate that they invite us. And even if it's an extra pain to get us in there and have a place for it, I so appreciate that they let us do it because, uh, I love to see that, that celebration of graduation. So we'll pass it one way and then send it back the other way. If there are any of the times that you can attend graduation, please, um, put your name on the sheet and record those times. Uh, so thank you, that's all of my report. I'm gonna turn to our Executive Director Lambert for her reports.
Sorry, I didn't want to start the, start it up until I got here. Teaser of what will be coming up. This is, uh, my director's report, want to thank you all for coming. And it's been quite a year, it's gone by really fast. Uh, we have a lot of schools that are celebrating. Uh, their graduation ceremonies are just one of the many things that they're doing. And I've picked out a few things of what's happening at the CSB as well as what some of our schools are doing. And that is what I'm gonna share with you today. And I don't know why. There we go. So I wanted to give you an update on one of your goals, uh, at least that was set, what, eighteen months ago or two years ago, something like that. And it was a required policies campaign. And if you recall, we actually adjusted the original goal. So the original goal was that we were going to, um, post a list of required policies and then we would go and check, um, to ensure that, help our schools to be able to have all of those policies. The problem with that is that that would require a lot of extra work by schools because we don't always know what policies they have to have unless we get more information from schools about what programs they have because some of the policies are dependent on what they're doing. So we adjusted it to focus more on that we would do a list of the required policies and on training and workshops to be able to help our schools and support them to be able to have all of the policies that are required of them. We then, uh, we're going to do an assurance survey where we would just survey all of our schools uh, and they would assure that they have all of the required policies. In thinking about all of the many things that schools are doing, you know, just building off of what Member Spiker was just talking about, um, we, we want them to be able to build that wonder in their schools and be able to focus on students. And so we decided not to do an assurance survey, which is more of a box checking than it seemed to be valuable. Um, instead, again, we're just focusing on the support and providing the information. We already got, um, someone asking, okay, where's, where's the, the updated list of required policies for what just was passed in the legislature? So this has been used. Um, and I really want to, uh, give a shout out to Sameriti DeKall, who did a lot of the legwork on this and so just reported back. Uh, we don't have data on whether or not how successful it was other than our own experiences of the schools that we've been able to interact with on this and the attendance at those trainings. I also want to talk about, uh, it is yet again starting. It feels like we just awarded, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the art contest and that, uh, the one that was the winner is, is on the slide. But we are starting the Second Annual Student Art Contest, which again will be promoted on our social media and it will be the cover page of our annual report. Uh, now the submission deadline isn't until next school year, but we're just starting to get the word out so that schools can know, they can be prepared. Uh, we have a number of art teachers at, um, the charter schools who are super excited by this. We have a theme this year. Last year it was just our first time and we were just getting it going. Uh, so we didn't have a theme this year, we decided to have a theme and it is What I've Learned. So it's student focused and, um, uh, that's wide open and we really look forward to all of the unique interpretations. And this is open to all, um, students in charter schools that we authorize K through twelve. And while this, uh, the one that won last year was a secondary, uh, student, uh, one of the runners up was a, I think, a kindergartner or someone in one of the young grades and it actually was my favorite, though the story behind this one makes this one, um, definitely makes this one one of my favorites as well. So just let you know. And if you have a chance to get the word out, to help us on that, please, please do. Now let's go to some of our, our schools and some of the things that are happening. This is a unique, um, opportunity that Monticello Academy is offering to their teachers. And as I understand, they are the first in the nation to do this. And when you have a lot of, um, there's a lot of talk about teachers not having high satisfaction in, in teaching and, and just a lot of discouragement. I think this is an amazing opportunity. What they're doing is they're partnering with another, with a company and they're offering to each of their teachers twenty-one hundred that they can use towards a vacation. And, uh, as Dane Roberts, he's the director at Monticello Academy, he says, "We have a big emphasis on history and geography in our curriculum. So offering travel funds as an employee benefit has serious mission alignment. We also hope that this benefit helps us differentiate while attracting and retaining the best people." So not only is this to, you know, increase job satisfaction for teachers and to provide, uh, an extra benefit, it truly does match their mission. And, um, hopefully these teachers can go and on some exciting trips that then they can share with their students, uh, the next year. So I thought that was pretty cool to share. I also wanna share about DaVinci Academy. Uh, and they went to the National Academic Decathlon recently. They first got there by winning the championship tro- trophy at the state competition and they ranked overall number sixteen in, um, in the national finals. And I just want to identify or shout out to two of the students at DaVinci. Ben Ferris, he was the top scoring student from DaVinci Academy. And then Emma Craig, uh, was identified as the most valuable team member by the, um, the decathlon. So I wanna say congratulations to the school, to their teachers, and most especially the students who participated. And I do wanna point out, this was not their first time going. This is something that the school, they, that they put an emphasis on and they do attend, uh, regularly. Adding to it, uh, we had two teachers from Vista School, that's, uh, down south. And they won, um, the Southern Utah STEM Award for Engineering Educators of the Year. And that is Andrew Egbert and Jordan Bertham. Yeah, that, Jordan. And their pictures are there and I just wanna say congratulations to them for being honored and, um, uh, for doing such a great job. Vista does, is a STEM school. They focus, well, and they also focus on arts, but they do focus a lot on engineering and technology. So this also matches their vision and mission very well. Now we have a number of, uh, charter schools that are already, have already been designated Purple Star Schools. So I did not include the full list of everyone who is a Purple Star, uh, Star School, but I did want to, um, let you know of three who were able to get that designation this year. So a Purple Star School is given to, uh, schools that are particularly, um, friendly, I guess, or have practices that are supportive of military families. And so just want to put a shout out to Excelsior Academy, Promontory School of Expeditionary Learning, and Utah Military Academy, who all, um, were recently so designated. And then, this is the last slide that I already gave you a little preview from. Uh, there was a STEM team for Mountain Heights Academy and they were selected out of eighteen hundred submissions from over eighty countries. So this is not just state, it's not just national, it is actually international. Now they were one of fifteen global finalists and one of seven from the U.S. who made it into the finalists. And they actually were the runner up. So you had, um, votes and, and they also chose, they were the runner up for, in the slings, um, slingshot challenge. Don't ask me what that exactly means, but I. And they were the, um, one of the finalists in terms of the People's Choice Awards. So, um, we, we got, people got to vote on who was their favorite. Um, I got to vote for them, but, uh, I guess they, and so they were able to be a finalist. I want to share with you their actual video. And there's been a lot of talk about the Great Salt Lake and so that's what they chose. And this is, uh, their video that the students made.
When we think about climate change, we often think about ice melting and sea levels rising. But climate change in Utah looks like the largest turmoil of Salt Lake. The U.S. drying up, this may not seem like a big deal, but it is. See these structures? They are called microbiolites and they feed the brown shrimp. It feeds seventy-five percent of Utah's wetland birds. Over seven million birds stock up the Great Salt Lake to feed each year. And since these birds feed on the brown shrimp, when the salt lake started to shrink, the brown shrimp population started to decline, meaning less food for these animals. It's the small change that make the big differences. We decided we can make a difference through hard work and determination. Through our research, we discovered Utah has the second driest. The largest consumer of water production in the nation. With about two thirds of water in private homes being used on lawns and landscapes. Unfortunately, forty percent of that water is wasted. Our device measures flow rate, takes tech and alert, uses higher than necessary water use while also alerting users of leaks. Our device, wasting water will become a thing of the past. We can all begin to help our lake by reducing the effects of climate change and conserving water one drop at a time.
So I'm sorry if the sound may not have been great, but we'll, we'll get the, um, link to you if you want to watch it again. But just want to congratulate them as well as all of our charter schools and, um, also for making it through another year. And that ends my director's report.
And it sounds like they did more than just make it through. They were accomplishing great things all along the way. I loved that report, thank you so much. It's always interesting to know what's happening in schools. It gives it, uh, you know, I always say, people are gonna talk about schools, so let's give them the right things we want them to talk about. And these are the things we want people to talk about in our schools, as opposed to other things. These are the right things to talk about and we're doing great work in schools. And so this is what we wanna talk about, those kinds of things. So thank you for giving us more to talk about, that's wonderful. All right, we're on the, at the point on our agenda to talk about, uh, our consent calendar. We have items on the consent today. I think you've had it, you had a chance to look at those in advance, board members. Are there any items anyone have, would like to? Vice Chair Phillips.
Thank you so much. Uh, because of a, uh, a conflict of interest on my part and I believe in other board members' part, I would like to pull, uh, as a separate voting item, the recommendations of the charter school revolving loan committee so that we can all vote on the, uh, the other items on the consent agenda, but, um, but have that one separate.
All right, and. Did you do?
I'd like to move that we, we pull the recommendations of the charter school revolving loan committee, um, from the consent agenda.
All right, so let, we're gonna pull that as a separate item. So a second to that motion to pull that consent item?
A second.
Second, thank you, Member Sisneros. I don't suspect there's any discussion necessarily, all those in favor of pulling that one item, say aye? Aye, all right, that's unanimous as I look around the group. Um, let's vote then on the other items first and then we'll handle that one item separately. The other items are our April meeting minutes, the monthly budget report, and, uh, the request from Promontory School of Expeditionary Learning that has also gone through, uh, review. So all those who, uh, are in favor of the remaining items of the consent calendar, say aye? Oh. I, I just skipped right to the end, so go ahead. We polled, someone make a motion and the rest of the consent.
Yeah, I'll move, I'll move that we approve the remaining items on the consent calendar.
Awesome, and a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
All right, all those who, I know we're all able to vote, all those in favor of that motion, say aye? Aye, perfect, thank you so much, that motion passes. Now let's look at the last piece, which is the revolving loan committee recommendation. And so, uh, Member Phil, we've, we've pulled that and the reason being that, Member Phillips, you just explained why.
Yes, I did.
Also.
I'll be abstaining as an employee.
All right, Member Sisneros abstaining because it includes itinerous school. So there are, we still have four remaining board members. That gives us a quorum in order to vote on that revolving, revolving loan committee recommendation. Know that they've gone through an extensive, each of these schools have gone through an extensive review with those folks on that committee. It now comes to us just to endorse their recommendation to approve each of those, uh, amounts, the, the requests from each of those schools. So we're, we're, we're endorsing that, our motion would be to endorse that if we make such a motion. Uh, and then it will still go to the State Board of Education for, for final approval. So, um, may I have a motion on the revolving loan committee recommendation? Bassett?
Thank you, I move to endorse the revolving loan committee recommendations for fiscal year twenty twenty-four as out.
Awesome, and anyone, a second from?
I can second that.
Second from Member Spiker. So the four of us then are the individuals who can vote. Member Olson, Bassett, Spiker, and Bowles, all those in favor, say aye? All right, we all four voted aye, as myself as well, so we all voted in favor of that. And that is our consent calendar, thank you for handling that well and keeping me on track. We are now at a place, uh, to, where we're gonna learn about our school land trust for this year. What, something that over time, you know, years ago, we didn't have. And we sometimes, I think these days, take for granted, but it is really, um, unique kind of opportunity for us. And, and Paula Plant is here to, are you going to or Elise is going to, Paula? Elise? Oh, Elise is online, okay, cause I was gonna, if Paula did, I was gonna say my favorite dancer, Paula Plant. But Elise is going to, Paula is the director of that office and Elise is going to present for us today the, about the annual school land trust. Thanks, Elise.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm not as great of a dancer. Paula can still be the best dancer for her.
She is, she is.
All right, I'm going to share just a few slides so that if you're a visual learner like me, you will be able to see all of the numbers that I'm talking about. My name is Elise Newey, and I am the former training specialist with the school land trust or the School Children's Trust. Let me switch these ones. There you are. And I just wanted to give you a quick update on where we are as a program and how this pertains to charter schools and be available as well as Paula Plant for questions if you have any. But just as far as our latest updates, this last school year, so the 2022-2023 distribution statewide was $95 million for charters that looked like about $11 million. And that's at $139.45 per student average. So it doesn't work out exactly that much for every school, but on average, that is how much each charter school gets per student. This next coming year, really exciting, our distribution increased. So it's $101 million with $11,862,141 going to charter schools across the state, which is about an average of $150 per student. So that's exciting. A lot of charters are getting a lot more money than they have been in the past, and they're able to do a lot more with it. As far as charter school participation, we have 141 total charter school sites, so that includes satellites. 133 of these are authorized by your board. We have some differences in the rule where charter schools can opt to use their governing board as their council if it meets all of the the requirements. And so 54 of the charter schools authorized by your board use their governing board as their council. So that means that the governing board is making those decisions about how they're going to spend that distribution money at their school. The other 79 schools create a separate trust land council that is made up of a parent majority that are able to make those decisions and make a plan for how that money would be spent in the upcoming year. As of right now, we are receiving those upcoming plans. So these are the plans that they're going to put into place next school year. And we received 75 of our total. And so if you have any connections to charter schools, just remind them to get those plans in. Because if we can get them in in the next couple of weeks, then we'll be able to get that distribution out to them during the summer months, and they can use that money in preparation for the school year. If it gets to us much later, then we have to kind of put them lower on the list, and they still get their distribution, but it just happens later in the school year. And then one note that I wanted to bring to your attention and will probably be bringing to you later on in the year is just some small minor revisions that we're making to our process as far as charter schools go. So currently, the process for approving upcoming plans and different aspects of our program go through the following process. They begin at the school level with the principal or the director. And then, once they are approved by the school or the director, they are moved on to the authorizer. And then the authorizer is supposed to approve them and pass them on to our program, the School Children's Trust. However, we found that that wasn't always the best use of everyone's time, and oftentimes, the authorizer was too far removed from the experiences of the school to really have any input on whether or not this plan was going to be helpful or useful or feasible. And so in working with some charter school stakeholders, we have the this idea to move some of that approval process to the charter governing board. Right? So the principal and director will approve again at the school level, but then pass that information on to either a member of the governing board or the business administrator or the governing board as a whole to look over those decisions and make sure that they align with the overall goals and funding and feasibility of the school as a whole. Then from there, the governing board would pass it on to us for a final approval for law and rule. So that's just one of the changes that we're thinking about in the upcoming months, but we will bring it back to you if anything official happens. If you have any ideas or any feedback, we would love to hear that. And we are just so grateful to be able to work with you. And if you have any questions, we're happy to take them.
Thank you so much, Elise. Thank you for that update. And we also understand Elise is leaving your office, though, is that right, Paula? But she will still be nearby? And she's cheering, so Elise will still, pardon me? Yeah, yeah.
Yes, thank you. Angie Stallings, Deputy Superintendent of Policy with the Utah State Board of Education. So hopefully Paula's not giving me the evil eye. But Elise will be working directly with me now as the new policy advisor at USBE. So if any of you ever worked with Jeff Van Holton in the past, she is taking what used to be his position. So we're excited to have Elise on the policy team and still with USBE. But for the next couple of months, Elise will be also supporting the school and trust staff, continue with some trainings and helping to train the new person who takes her place. So but we're very happy to have her on the policy team. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to state that.
Absolutely. And so congratulations, Elise, and lucky for us as well, all of us. So it's nice to have you still in that position. Relative to those charter, to the the land trust dollars, we have to remember, because I'm old enough, I remember when we didn't have them at all. And to have in this next year almost $102 million for schools to use for really for projects that are really important and help to children to learn and have opportunities throughout the state is remarkable. It is folks today, we say, how will we use that money? We have to just remember, it's one of the things that should give us wonder and awe, that we remember that we have have those dollars that we we did not have before. And because of of efforts of a really a team, initially, I'm going to give credit to parents who, PTA mothers a lot, who really pressed at that time to make that happen. And a lot of people who stepped on board to say, let's make this work. And let's get those dollars to into the schools' hands so they can do good things for for kids. And it does make sense. I don't think we, I don't know, remember us ever as a as an authorizing board approving. Have we ever approved? I don't remember a meeting that we ever approved land trust plans. So I'm not at all concerned that it's done closer to the LEA.
Do you want me to speak to that?
Yeah.
Sure. So it was one of those interesting kind of things in, I believe it was statute? Is that, no, it was in rule? Well, that there was a requirement that the authorizer approved them, but then it also said that for that USBE would basically act as the authorizer. And so we really give a lot of thanks to Director Plants and her staff in in helping us out in the past. We had discussions last year about us taking it over, and we were prepared to do that. So you may have seen it if this hadn't gotten changed. But it really does make more sense as we were talking through it that it is the governing boards and that these are LEAs. These are local education agencies, and that we should value that. And for us to review it and approve it, it would be probably not as meaningful.
Yeah, absolutely. Mostly, I think what we would do at this level is just make sure it was an appropriate expenditure for those particular, that particular pot of money, that there are some things that schools need and would would buy, but not out of this money. And so oftentimes, that's what we would primarily look at. So it makes sense that it happens with the governing board, and then the Paula's office can just double-check those little pieces and and help that. So thank you for your work keeping track of these monies for kids and making sure that works. Both Elise and Paula, thank you for your work. And I know every school does appreciate it. And I want to keep reminding them to have wonder and awe around these monies, that they can do things that they would not have been able to do in the past. So wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you for that presentation, too. And we're glad you're going to be nearby still, Elise, so that's good. All right. One of the things I'm going to move next to our on our agenda to the school readiness to open review. Every year, that's something that we need to do at this time of year to to just as an interim check. And I'm doing that while Marie is getting ready. Ms. Stephenson, there she goes, and she'll take us through this readiness to open review. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Bowles. Good morning, board members. We're ready to go over our readiness to open review for John Hancock Charter School. This comes to you today from the statute or rule, which is R277-552-4. And the background here is that before a charter school can open, we have to certify to the superintendent that the school has met their readiness to open. And that allows them to then start receiving those funds that then flow in July and open successfully. And and that is something that is required before a school can receive those state funds. And so John Hancock Charter School, to refresh your memory, is opening a campus in Eagle Mountain, and it is a K-8 school out there in Eagle Mountain. And one thing that was different and unique about this satellite was that their original location has about 200 students, and this satellite is 900 students. So it was a large change that this school is having as they are getting ready to open this satellite in a really exciting endeavor that they are undertaking with this satellite school. And so as we've checked with them and worked with them over these past pre-operational months, they have been very busy getting ready to open. And as you can see here, everything is either complete or nearing completion. Their construction is the one thing that is still in process, and they are estimated to take occupancy of their building August 1st. Drawing your attention to a few of the things that sometimes are still being worked on, but they have actually completed at this point. They have hired at least 85% of their staff. They have got all of their their meetings and their certifications done. And they have enrolled at least 75% of their authorized max for year one. I want to point that out, as of May 2nd, they had 762 students registered of that 900 max. And that's actually 87%, which meets that requirement. One thing we did want to note that is a little bit different with this satellite school is that because of the financial impact that this school has by growing from 200 students to a max of 1,100 as an LEA, they have been working with both the State Charter School Board and the Utah State Board of Education to make sure that there would be sufficient funds prior to that October 1 count and then that true-up that would occur along with the projections that have been submitted. And thankfully, USBE and the State Charter School Board and the school were able to all work together and make sure that adequate funds will be available so that all of those students who are slated, if they all show up, which we're all hoping they will, will they'll be able to receive those funds prior to the October 1 count and the adjustment period. So that's been another good project and a success of the organizations working together. So with that, we would recommend that everything has been met here and that a possible motion would be that the board would recommend that the school is ready to open. We did put some words up here, but I will track your changes and put your words up here for you so that we have that clarity. So I will be typing and scribing for you. We do also have Chair Frank and Business Manager Frank here as well. If you would like to ask any questions, they are here to answer those for you if you would like, Chair Bowles. So I will turn the time back to you.
Thank you. How about if we make a motion and then we add any discussion or information items in addition to that? And I'm wondering if Deputy Superintendent Jones may have something he wants to discuss? Maybe we should do that information first before a motion. Deputy Superintendent Jones, anything, and then?
Thank you, Chair. So Deputy Superintendent of Operations Scott Jones for the Utah State Board of Education. So Marie covered it really well. Just when we get to the August point, my understanding is the first day of school for them is August 15th. If I'm wrong about that, I need to know that.
They're nodding, so I'm thinking that's right.
And so then, what we're needing from the school is the SSID numbers to verify that the counts or the board has, at our board's direction, has set aside funding from a source of one-time money called the Tax Delay Fund. Without getting into too many details about how we got that, that's, it's at the board's direction. So it'll be imperative that as soon as possible, on or after the August 15th, if we can get the SSID numbers from the school of the students that showed up on that first day of school as verification, that they hit that 1,100 mark or, you know, thereabouts. I mean, we we understand. Then what we're anticipating doing is being able to provide as much of the set-aside money as is consistent with the verification of the SSID numbers. The Common Data Committee had estimated 600 students, so they're funded for a 600-student aggregate level for the campus. So what we did is we took basically the WPU value and divided that into, you know, 500 students in anticipation that, you know, because our understanding, our further understanding is that their cap is 1,100. So, you know, that's that's pretty much the the process that we'll take at the direction of the Utah State Board of Education for that funding to help them absorb such a large increase. The other thing I want to say is, it's not uncommon that the Common Data Committee is off, you know, in in the estimates, but not as much as 500 students. So we agree or concur that that can be quite an impact to any school that, you know, would would gain 500 students at the first of the year. And so, you know, typically, we wait for the October 1 counts. Then it's another month or so before we, you know, for lack of a better term, true up that difference between what the CDC estimate was and, you know, what their October 1 counts came in at. So we'll be ready, but it's imperative or, you know, based upon seeing, getting the SSID numbers and then verifying those that they're not duplicated anywhere else within any other district or school. Thank you. Subject to your questions, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. And others may have questions as we go along, but that obviously is really important, the SSID numbers, to make sure, I mean, we know how many children in the state, but where are they? And so where should the funding go? And I I know that John Hancock is prepared to make sure that happens, and thank you for working with them so that they can open. This is a big jump for them as well, but it's kind of been from a lot of encouragement from folks who they've held back that smaller number for so many years. And now they've opened the the door to this new enrollment and opportunity and possibility. So we appreciate you working with them to help that, and they'll do their part to make sure that's happened. I don't know if if Chair Frank has anything she wants to add to that, or if not, we'll go ahead. All right. Thank you so much. All right, would any other, let's make a motion, and then if you want to have any discussion, let's do that. But I thought that information might be useful to you. So would someone, is someone prepared to make a motion? And thanks to Ms. Stephenson, who gave us a great overview and a potential motion, we're ready to go. I feel like I'm in What's My Line?
I know. I'll make the motion, please. I move to certify that John Hancock Charter School has met the requirements of the readiness to open review and direct staff to notify the superintendent through our current process.
All right, so Member Spiker has made the motion, which you've just heard and read. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
And Member Olson seconds the motion. Thank you. Any discussion around that motion? Members Sisneros, go ahead.
Just a clarifying question. So we had a recusal in the consent, and I'm assuming John Hancock was that. So I'm just curious about that recusal now.
Ah, good question.
I didn't make that transparent, but I did not vote. And so I will not be voting on this. I am, I am conflicted. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. All right. So Member Phillips will recuse herself from that because she does some work with, with John Hancock School. So she'll recuse herself from, from that vote. Any other discussion? All right. Remaining members, not seeing any additional discussion, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And I saw ayes from everyone, so I'm not going to ask for any opposed because I think I only saw a unanimous approval. So John Hancock, move forward, get those SID numbers to, to Deputy Superintendent Jones and his team and lucky kids. Well done. Thank you so much. All right. We now have a procedure policy discussion. AAG Olson will lead us through that and thank you so much for, for doing that.
Thank you for the opportunity. Last session SB 65 passed, which requires charter school authorizers to have policies in place that are substantially similar to the Rulemaking Act when they're passing policies that relate to standards, guidelines and policies for the charter schools. The Charter School Board has a procedures policy which is pretty much substantially similar if whatever that means, that term, but the only place that it, it lacked, as I reviewed it, was in providing or not providing for emergency situations. Your policy states that this, this procedures policy applies in all cases except in emergency situations. The Rulemaking Act has a process for exigent, exigent circumstances, which would encompass emergency, but different terminology. But it also provides, you know, what, what do you do in those situations? So I, I brought in basically the same idea from, from that statute or that rule or the statute rather, and made it part of your policy. And then it gave also the opportunity to add some clarifying language in the policy, not really substantively changing it in those cases and then some technical changes as well. That's what is being presented to you to, to look at that policy.
So, ah, wonderful. Okay. Great. You have a potential motion relative to that. Comes out of this, this last legislative session. We know that we need to do it. Thank you for making it even bigger for those of us who don't see well.
Chair, before you go to the motion, I, I failed to point out, I meant to, I wanted to explain what that situation is when there's an emergency situation or in this case, we're not using the terminology emergency, we're using exigent, exigent circumstances. But I think it's important to know what you do. And essentially what it is, is that you're able to, you still have to put, publish notice on your webpage and you still have to send notice to those that have requested notice. But you don't need to do the other procedures so long as the policy doesn't go for more than 120 days. If it's meant to go for more than 120 days or you want it to go for more than 120 days, then you go back through the, the normal process. So that's what's been added to your rule. I apologize for not explaining that. I meant to do that.
All right. And as you know, this is a motion that we're going to move to the next step with this policy. It doesn't mean we're approving change of policy itself, but opening it up for individuals to comment on the potential of it and we will consider it again in the future and have a chance to look at public comments. So this is just a motion to move it to the next step. So do I have a motion from anyone? Would I, Member Bassett? Thank you.
This is Wordy. I move to publish notice of the amended procedures policy along with the action summary and analysis of the proposed amendments on the board's webpage for 30 days and to put the amended policy with any public comments on the board's August meeting consent calendar.
Yeah. So that is the motion. Do I have a second to that motion?
A second.
A second from Member Spiker. And of course, it's going to August because it, we won't have 30 days by our, in our June meeting to consider and we typically don't meet in July. So that's why it will go to August. So it'll give lots of time for folks to consider and we don't need to make a motion prior to that. So we'll be all right to, to give that ample time to be examined. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion other than just that clarification? Not seeing any. All those in favor of the motion to move, put that in, move it forward to the next step? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. That is a unanimous, I should have said unanimous approval. I didn't need the nays. We knew that approved forward. So we'll put that up on the webpage, ready for public comments. So folks have an opportunity to express their thoughts for us to consider. We're now going to move to a working lunch. We're just really close to time and that working lunch, Member Phillips will lead us through a discussion, a strategic plan, and she has some portions of it she would like us to look at. And we received an assignment in our last meeting to come prepared today, ready to do that. So we'll get up and if you need to take a little break, move around for a few minutes. And I believe, do we need any particular instructions relative to lunch other than it looks like it's on the table?
Yes, it is on the table. We have some water and sodas. We actually, I want to thank Joanne for being able to get us dessert too. So not only do you have lunch, but you also have some dessert.
What could be better? And for those who want just dessert or to start with that, you have that opportunity as well. All right. So we will take a break for a few minutes and so we can get that lunch and be prepared and then we'll begin our discussion. All right. Take us to this portion of our, of our meeting.
Thank you so much Chair. Chair Bowles, I appreciate the opportunity. We've always considered the strategic plan to be a living document and we knew that when we passed it, you know, worked on it and then passed it almost a year ago now, not quite, that it was a draft in essence. And a couple of wonderful things have come from it. One is that we've been able to, I think as a board, consider what our role is as governance better and to try to begin to understand our responsibilities to our charter schools from that governance perspective. And that's been helpful. The second thing is one of our goals, one of our governance motions that was made, our staff has fulfilled, which is that, well ahead of schedule, which is that wonderful board training for local charter school boards that we anticipated might be rolling out over a series of years. And with the staff's guidance and discovery of resources and then system implementation, we have something that's already available to charter schools. I've heard all kinds of wonderful excitement around that portal, that, that learning management content from schools randomly. It's not something I've asked about. It's, it's something that they have on their own sought out charter school board members to express excitement about. So that's been really fun. That clearly has met a need and struck a chord kind of of something people were looking for that would be targeted learning for their boards and a way to improve their institutions. So I'm glad that we, we've had some results from the strategic plan already that, that have been really great. As I've been thinking about our governance role, I actually don't want to necessarily, at the beginning here, talk about specific goals that I think not need modification within the strategic plan. And I hope some of you have thought about that and will provide some recommendations. But instead, I want to pose some questions and some thoughts that I have that I feel are very substantive, but that also are a little bit, they would be a change, they would be a clarification and perhaps in some cases, a change of direction for our board as a, where, from where we are now to where we might want to go. So this would be something that comes out of my head and may have absolutely nothing to do with what a single other board member would like to do. But I want to tell you how I got to this place and that's important. The first is that we have, we are in the process of in fact, of trying to have a very good MOU established with the State Board of Education. And one of the things that I think has made that process difficult, and I put this fully at the, I put the blame fully on our board for this, is that we actually don't know. It's, it's hard to have a relationship that defines kind of who each of the agencies is in relation to each other if you don't actually know who you are. This has been a problem for us. We have vacillated between wondering about how much of what we do and what we say and what we focus on should be monitoring and compliance, how much should be support, how much should be, what are the, what are the criteria for which we would go into each of these different roles? I think those are the very wrong questions to ask because in many ways, the legislature has already set that up for us. And I say that by saying that, by, by pointing out the fact that the legislature set up evergreen charters in our state. Now you may or may not like that. That's, that's another question. Come with me to the legislature next session if you care to be involved in, in whatever. But we live in that, we live in that environment. We have charters that are evergreen. And so although we can in fact, and have closed schools for very specific reasons, the idea of an evergreen charter gives the presumption to the school staying open. It simply does. And so that, first of all, is the world we live in, that schools are legislatively supposed to stay open. When have we closed the schools maybe and felt, not that our feelings are the only thing, but felt most justified? Probably, I would say that when schools don't have enrollment, that supports their financial ability to operate. Even schools that have struggled mightily, we have been, we have often been very, very kind and understanding to because we know they might be serving underserved students. We know that parents are supportive of them and parents have made a choice. And that is another thing that legislatively has been prioritized for us is parental choice. Not only through the discussions that the legislature had when they first passed and then have modified the charter law, but even in recent discussions where we've butted heads a little bit, we and the State Board of Education have butted heads a little bit related to, with the legislature related to what the satellite and expansion process ought to be. The legislature pushed back and said, don't worry so much about X. Parents are choosing this. This matters a lot to us. Figure out a system that would allow A, B, and C to happen. It's not as though we don't know the climate that we live in, but I'm not sure we've transparently discussed the climate that we live in, in our state. We are not any other state. We are Utah. We have a certain charter statute. We have legislators that are in power at this time and, and making decisions for the people. They've been elected, duly elected, and they give us a certain message as well. In addition, I just want to bring in an example from the classroom, which I've been in, as you know, almost all of my adult life. If as a teacher, I focus on, I describe, I spend time on, I write on the board, I grade on a certain thing, my students are going to try to achieve that certain thing. And therefore, if we as a state charter school board, talk about, focus on, spend our resources on, and this would apply to the Utah State Board of Education too, but we're not their board, so I don't have to worry about that. If, if, if what we focus our resources on, our discussions on, our trainings on, everything on, compliance, that is what we will get. That's what we get. Now I get that in a classroom. You'll get that from schools. So as a board, we have to decide what our, first of all, who we are, and, and I'll, I'll get back to that in just a second. And part of that, again, has been legislatively defined, but part of that is defined by how we allocate our resources and what we talk about and what we care about the most. So some things that have, we've had to care about in the past and, and have talked about caring about are parent choice, outcomes, compliance, and maybe a list of a few others, but those are some big ones. Innovation, we've talked about that as well. We have, I think, more broadly looked at, at metrics and key elements of schools when we've, when we have been evaluating our charters that might be allowed by, for instance, the Utah State Board of Education with the number of students and LEAs that they specifically oversee without a charter agreement. The other thing I'd like to focus on is the nature of the agreements that we have with schools. These are bilateral. These are bilateral. It's a very interesting concept really, and I'm sure Eric would have much more clarity than I can give, but I'm, I'm going to, he's going to have a chance to do that because I'm just throwing out some things I want you to consider. The bilateral agreement means that both groups have a stake and both groups have a say. And very often, I think, the way that we approach our schools as a board, as staff, staff does what we direct them to do. So we own whatever staff does. This isn't a criticism of staff. If anything, as you can tell by the way I'm framing it, is a criticism of the board, myself included, that we have approached our schools as though it is a unilateral agreement, as though we are your authorizer and you need to do what we say. And we get to say even, we even get to determine and interpret entirely or autonomously what that agreement says that you signed with us. And so the other thing I want us to consider is how much of what has been a persistent criticism of the State Charter School Board is its relationship with its schools, its communication with its schools, and the assumptions made about that bilateral agreement. To bring in something that I think is related, these are kind of parts, spikes going off of some core things that I'm going to suggest we bat around and think about because I think it would be very, very helpful to our staff for us to gain some clarity here. It would be helpful to our MOU with the Utah State Board of Education. Sometimes I think we act too much like, instead of a bilateral agreement with our schools, we have a bilateral agreement with the Utah State Board of Education. Now, I want to have a good relationship with the Utah State Board of Education and we've worked hard on that in these last handful of years. When I came on the board, frankly, we inherited, my, my generation of that, of those board members inherited a very poor relationship with the Utah State Board of Education. But in, these are not mutual, we do not have to have mutually exclusive goals here to have bilateral agreements with our school and a very good MOU with the Utah State Board of Education. But we often act like the board of education is, is the individual corporation with whom we have this bilateral agreement and that is not the case. The other thing I'd like to, this isn't shifting gears, except to say this goes along with the communication aspect. And again, the communication aspect requires us to be clear about who we are as a board and what we prioritize, what our role actually is, and what we're going to direct the majority of our resources toward. Because we do live in a legislative environment that does require us to care about the agreement we make with charters, to care about student outcomes, which I think all of us do anyway, and to care about compliance. But there are lots of things I care about in my classroom that aren't the focus of each and every day and that don't necessarily become the assessment tool for the school. So going along with one other now piece of the communication part, we, ever since I've been on the, the board, and remember that warning used to be something that the board voted on, now it's become a consent that the board voted on, now it's become a consent calendar item, so the board does vote, but in a much more indirect way. But I'm not thinking about our recent probation with Vanguard, so I'm thinking about the totality of what I've experienced with warnings and probations. The board gives a very clear directive about why a school is being put on probation. And because we have been so heavily in a compliance and monitoring mode, and we have felt that responsibility keenly, which you do when you're an authorizer, you know, you can't exonerate yourself from that as board, but what has tended to happen is that the communication of usually two or three very clear things that the board is putting a school on probation for, become a list of 12 or of six. This would, this happened as well with warning in the past. For schools experiencing that, it feels like the board putting a school on probation becomes a blank check to find all that can be found that needs improving about that school, that might rise to a, a certain level, a certain level. I don't think that was ever the intent of probation or warning. It's come from a good place. It's come from a place where when a school's in trouble, well, first of all, when we have two or three specific things for which a school had, is placed on probation or has in the past been placed on warning, often there are tangential things related to those that legitimately ought to be noticed. But on the other hand, the other good place is that, similarly, the other good place that it comes from is saying, "This is a school in trouble. We need to help them now that we've investigated and we've found some acute areas of concern." Better communication, in my opinion, would be to bring that back to the board and have the board decide whether that's worthy of probation or whether that's something that on the side, you're noticing them of a concern, rather than having a process that seems to gather as it rolls forward like a, you know, like a snowball. That's been confusing to schools, even though it's come from a good place, both from the board and from staff, it's come from a good place. The, the other thing that, that sometimes I think because we, we do focus so much on compliance, which the State Board of Education is focusing on, I mean, we have some specific compliance things within the charter, but we've perhaps allowed ourselves to snowball out into places that the State Board of Education really has province and supervision for, and therefore, a lot of our resources that could be directed to the environment that we have in our state, which is the presumption of keeping a school open and successful, have been directed to areas where the State Board already has resources and we're creating redundancies at times and perhaps a confusion about our role and the State Board of Education's role, which doesn't help either our governance nor does it help with our relationship with the State Board. It becomes muddied. So I'm going to throw out some things. That's a lot, and they're, you know, they're related, some very, very closely, others more tangentially, but one of the things that I think, one last kind of before I suggest some very, very rough motions, and again, I'm only putting them out there, not as motions actually, but as ideas. There's a difference. I'm not going to be making formal motions about that. But one of the things that I want you to think about, if we had 50, well, not 50, that's unrealistic, let's say we had 15 authorizers in our state. We have a handful, maybe not even five, but maybe five. Now with the new legislation that allows Westminster and somebody, perhaps we have five, but let's say we have 15. And imagine if, I just want us to kind of change our paradigm for a minute. Imagine if the money allocated to the state board, to the state charter school board was given to the schools in escrow for each of their students, you know, there was a, there was some dirty math done on that, and then you have, you have a little, a little amount per student. And you could take that money and go to the authorizer that could help you to become the best school in an evergreen state. You know, most of the time, we look at the schools we've closed. What have we closed? You know, three or four have closed themselves, and we may have closed in the history of the 25 years of charters, we may have closed four or five, almost invariably for financial reasons and, and/or did absolute dysfunction. Otherwise, they've closed themselves because of those reasons. So we're still going to close schools. We're still going to have moments of harping on compliance, but my point would be in who, in the, in the state we live in, if, if we had this situation, would our schools bring their allotted money to us? And if so, because I think many would, why? Why? What are we doing for those particular schools that would continue to stay authorized with the state charter school board that makes us fulfilling of our statutory obligations, desire us as bilateral partners, and essentially fulfilling, I think, the mission, furthering the mission of those, the charter schools in Utah through those schools? I think that's where our strategic plan needs to focus. The staff is really, really good at, at following directions that we give them as a board in ways that we couldn't possibly have imagined. You know, I, I, I give this, this board training as an example. That exceeded my expectations by 300%, maybe 1,000%. We need to trust our staff to be able to fulfill what we want in terms of direction very, very well, but we need to start giving it at a high level in a way I don't know if we have for a really long time. They can't, if we don't really know what our priorities are, they can't. And those values, you know, those values are great, but they, they're, they are, they're, in fact, they're wonderful, but we have to create governance level directives to go with them or they're just really nice on a website. So I'm going to throw some things out because I've had a little more time to think about where we might go with something like this. So that we can have a really great discussion, and this will probably be just one of many. I don't know that anything will be resolved today. Maybe, maybe it will. Sometimes the sport is amazing and we just get a lot done quickly. Other times, things need to settle. So one of the ways I think that we could, we could already act as though our authorized charters have an opportunity to choose us, even though we are literally the legislative-created group that authorizes schools and we have, you know, 90-plus percent of all authorized charters in the state. But instead of acting like that, maybe we could act like we are in a highly competitive authorizing environment and our bilateral agreement with the schools means something really special. So with that in mind, I'm just going to throw this out, again, very rough. This is not a motion, I want to put that on the record, but imagine a motion hypothetically in which the SCSB directs its staff to develop and implement a program that recognizes the bilateral nature of the agreement between the board and its authorized schools by, and again, this is where, okay, by allowing authorized school to claim specific supports and processes in the, in the course of the state charter school board's provision of charter oversight and assistance. Imagine if I, with, let's say I'm directing a school of, you know, five, between 550 and 600 students, I have a right to certain things and I know it. My presence in the state charter school board's portfolio actually allows me to engage in process, certain processes with the state charter school board staff and/or the board that are explicit, that allows me to tap into certain targeted improvements from the state charter school board staff or resources created there thereby, allows me certain types of processes of appeal administratively, besides those that are in statute and rule related to appeals, but others that we have created administratively so that I, I, my authorizer is holding me accountable, but I'm holding my authorizer accountable too to certain things that I, I deserve, need, get because I've signed this agreement to run this school with them. Don't know how that looks or sounds exactly, but I'm throwing that out there. Another possible motion, again, this is hypothetical, I'm not making a motion, that the SCSB direct its staff to develop and implement a comprehensive communication system that is transparent, streamlined, accessible to schools based on best practices such as templates, rubrics, et cetera. So that I know exactly what I should be getting when, that it's streamlined, it's one page. This, I think, helps the work of both the board and staff, that it is absolutely predictable. There, there isn't, there is nothing harder for schools that are so busy trying to do the work of educating kids and managing staff and improving capacity and in complying and in improving outcomes than surprises. And lack of clarity. So again, I trust our staff to know what that should look like. I, you know, I don't want to say any more details. I have my own ideas, but I'm not staff. And then, and then I think too, that the board should actually take a motion, and I did not even draft this one because I don't know what the board would, would want, but where we actually list for staff our priorities in allocation of resources, time, discussion, training, et cetera, is, is our priority to keep a school open until we can't, to favor parent choice, because if you've got a school that has a lot of enrollment and people love, so it's perfectly financially sound but is struggling with its outcomes. So we've got a school that's running that parents have chosen. They love it. Metrics, we don't necessarily love so much. We broaden our metrics and we love it a little more because it's serving underserved students, but our staff has to worry, are we doing what the board wants because here we have a school with low outcomes? We need to say what we want. We need to say, "We don't care as much about the RISE test as we do about growth," or "We don't care as much about if, if, at least if they're serving students at an average level, a median, and if they're not, let's help them with that." We don't want to close that school. The parents love it because it's the only reason their child is even getting up in the morning and going to get an educate, excuse me, get an education. But we have left our staff in the position of not knowing what we care about as a board and whether we're going to take wholesale the metrics of the Utah State Board of Education and become an extension of that agency, which is a wonderful agency with a highly constitutional purpose and a highly important purpose in our state, but we are not that board. So we have vacillated between being almost the Wild West charter group, you know, from the late 90s to a board that in some ways mimics the Utah State Board of Education, and that's not us. That's not what we were legislatively created to do. So we have got to figure out what we care about as a board and let our staff know, any time that they go, seem to go afoul of what we actually want, guess what? We haven't told them what we want. That's on us. So with that, Chair, I turn the time over to you to maybe determine how you like this. Opening it for discussion perhaps?
That would be a great idea. Yeah, let's do that. So if anyone has reactions to what Vice Chair Phillips has discussed, you want to talk for a little bit? Please do.
I saw a hand here.
No, we, we value your input, so know that when you're here, we want them, so.
I just want to start by saying, I don't think if we had the same discussion at USBE, it would be like this. I think the tension level and the anxiety, I mean, you feel it building at our meetings. And I just want to start by saying it is always a pleasure to come to these meetings because of the, I'm just going to say the decorum that takes place, so thank you for that. But I do have one question, Vice Chair Phillips. You said that SCSB in many ways mimics the USBE. What, what do you mean by that? Because I, I, I don't have that history, I don't have that background.
Prob, excuse me. I took a bite of a granola bar over here, and it didn't do me well there. We, you know, briefly, when, when the state charter school board first was, was started in the early 2000s, because the Board of Ed, the Utah State Board of Education was the first authorizer in our state of charters, along with districts, but that wasn't unrolling the way the legislature wanted it to, so the state charter school board was, was created to authorize schools. And at first, I would say there was too much tension between the state charter school board and the State Board of Education because the State Board of Education wasn't necessarily supportive of even having charter schools in the state. There'd been a lot of tension and angst but, between pro-charter groups and more traditional educational groups. Much of that in the process of, of just working together for kids has in fact been resolved. There's still some of it hanging around that every now and then will unexpectedly for me, because I love all kids, kind of rear its head, but it's rare. You know, it's rare, and it's kind of in people who need to get into the 20, 2020s, right? But one of the things that over the last two decades, the state charter school board has tended more and more to do is to use the same metrics for evaluating its schools as the State Board of Education to overlap with the State Board, which isn't altogether in every aspect horrible, but in monitoring its schools, thereby creating the redundancies I mentioned. There will always need to be a little of that, right? That's not something that can, that can or should be eliminated in its entirety. But, you know, we, we closed, a school closed itself some, some years ago, and it really showed the, the way in which both the State Board of Education and state charter school board had begun to think about each of their roles as pretty much the same. And that's just not accurate. I think the Board of Education would agree with me on that. But, but essentially, as that school closed, we were acting in concert with the State Board doing things that the state charter school board should have been doing and the state charter school board arguably doing some of the things the State Board should have been doing. So I think that what happens is that without our having firmly defined our priorities and who we are, we haven't been able to develop a healthy, very good working relationship with the State Board of Education, delineating where those responsibilities should and do overlap and where they don't, and the different roles that we play that, that can, that can incorporate a small bit of healthy tension. That's okay too, just as there can be that healthy tension sometimes between a board and its management. Those are good things because you usually reach better decisions and better processes through those. So we, we don't shy away from healthy tension. We don't want it to be unhealthy or uncivil tension ever. So I would say that whereas charters used to have these, the charter agreements used to have these wonderful key elements, which were probably prioritized higher than state outcome metrics, we have gone exactly the opposite now. So those key elements that made a charter unique and that drew parents, you know, maybe the scores on the RISE test are pretty average to low, but the music and performing arts is wonderful, and that's what my kid's actually going to go to college in. And some other things like that, or there's a wonderful outdoor education, or it's a green school, and that matters more than anything to my family. We don't care about the RISE test. We care about that green school, that you're composting, that you have a greenhouse, that you have solar panels. So, so, you know, the, these are the kinds of things that, because we said, parents get to choose, you know, what environment their kids have, that's what charters were for. If, if the- If, if the district school, which might be a really great school, because so many are, isn't what my family wants, I don't have to be rich enough to send my kid to a private school to have a choice now. And what we value is the environment, and so we're going to go to this school. This is what we want our child to learn. So, you know, we, because we have tended away from that, we are in some ways like a mini charter board of education. I don't want to, in saying that, I don't want to suggest that there's anything wrong with the actual board of education, or that there aren't shared responsibilities that are important.
Thank you, and thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thank you. Others who'd like to, to weigh in, would like to just discuss, yeah, Member Cisneros, please.
I'm going to try to make sense of my paper. I think Cindy's question, or I'm sorry, Vice Chair Phillips' question of would schools pay to be in our portfolio is solid. I'm not going to share my thoughts on that right now. What I am going to share is, my first master's is in organizational development, and what was drilled in my head was where a person or an organization spends their time or money demonstrates what they value. And she brought that up with what we as a board have focused on with our words and our resources. And so I appreciate that reminder. About 20 years ago is when I started down this parent choice rabbit hole. And so I do favor parent choice. However, and as Director Lambert can attest, this is a argument we had for three and a half years while I was on staff. And the question for parent choice is not do we favor parent choice, but if the state charter school board has the legislative duty to be the gatekeeper to public funds, then the public has a right to expect a minimum standard for those public funds in spite of parent choice. So, so if I'm a parent and greenhouses and open space and no rise tests and everybody's barefoot at school, then, then in some aspect, the parent's choice is to opt out of public ed. And I, and I am a parent choice advocate, I want that on the table. I've had children in every version of education, because I have four individual children. And the one, my youngest, I must be getting soft in my age, because he's at the big massive district high school, which I never thought I could stomach, because I'm, I'm a poodle parent and I'm overachieving with my kids, and, and that scared me. And he is a 3.85 student, loves it, love, go Harriman High Mustangs, he, he loves it. But as a public taxpayer, I have a right to say that the public funds have a minimum standard associated with where they're going, that, that children's feet aren't getting banged up because they're running around barefoot, and that at least reading is being taught in, in an equitable manner across the board, and that, you know, Klingon is not the language of choice being taught in the language of, right? I, I have a right to ask that of the public funds. And so the question then becomes, if USBE sets the minimum standard, then we, I think, have a legislative charge to make sure that who gets public funds are meeting that minimum standard. The further question then becomes, as gatekeepers, are we gatekeepers one time, speaking to the Evergreen Contract? And once you've crossed that threshold in as an, as an acceptable entity, then who holds the responsibility for perpetual funds? Does the authorizer have the responsibility to main, to ensure that the schools in its portfolio maintain that minimum standard? Or is that role transferred to USBE for, because it's their standard? And so then are they the overseers of those minimum standards? I, I don't also have an answer to that. I, I think on one aspect, yes, we always have been doing double duty. I think some of that is because of our origin story of charter schools starting as a USBE department, and that just has, had created its own kind of entanglement. But I, I wonder if, you know, like, for example, on academics, there's a department that oversees and helps and corrects and does all of that check for schools who are not meeting their academic performance standards, and that's, that's their role. So are they listening to two different sets of advice on how to correct academics, and, and that's not what we should be doing? Instead, is ours that if you're not honoring your minimum commitment, that means you don't get to have expansions or, or be rewarded or promoted? But, but is it our job to then say you no longer get access to public funds because you're not meeting that minimum standard? That's all the notes I wrote. I, I have no answers to any of those questions, just lots of question marks on my paper.
Thank you. Thanks. Those are good additional thoughts for us to, to consider as well. Joe, I'm going to say we probably have charges of both, obviously. And I'm going to go back, because I started with the mission and vision, and just as I look at them both again, it has both elements. So advancing quality choice, innovation, and student success means that it has to, there's, there's a level of what, maybe how we define what that success is through rigorous authorizing, supportive oversight. The vision, which I didn't read earlier, but it says every student has access to an excellent education. Maybe that's defining what that excellent education is, but there's a certain academic standard with, that I interpret that to mean, and, and I think in our discussion, that was the intent, that meets their unique learning needs. So it's kind of a balance. We're asking for excellent education and quality learning, but it's done in, through an avenue that's unique for individual families. So it's kind of both. I think, I mean, we need to have both elements, it's not one or the other, that we're looking really for both of those. Yeah, go ahead.
I completely agree, but I'd like to do, do a little bit of a paradigm shift again and say, very often, I think when we think about a school that is failing academically, and of course, the USBE can and does step in with school turnaround, to your point, as far as that particular oversight on their own standards, right, for all public students. But when we think of a school that's failing that we have authorized, and we think about our mission to ensure, and again, the way we define success and excellence does not have to be necessarily in accordance with the USB's definition of that, it can be, it can overlap, but it doesn't have to. That's something that, you know, we've, we've kind of struggled with throughout, at least the time I've been on the board. But the, is the paradigm that we then look at warning probation and possible closure in order to achieve a portfolio that has the outcomes that we've defined as excellent and successful? Or do we have a paradigm that says we look for significant support in mentoring for that school, possible mergers with other successful charter schools, or other ways to keep that school open and essentially promoting the mission that we authorized it for? So I, I'm just looking at the paradigm there. There are different ways of achieving the excellent and successful outcome. We first need to define what those are for our board and not just wholesale decide that we have to take the definitions of our state education agency in that regard, because we get to define that, it's our value. And then what's the paradigm for a school not, what is the, what, what do we, for our organization at a governance level, how do we address that situation? Because our staff needs to know that, because they don't know what we care, how we care to do that. And that's the other thing that's, part of this conversation is, we've left our staff traveling, I mean, occasionally we give clear directives on one particular school or one particular thing, and we give, we gave some clear directives in our strategic plan, you know, finally, which was helpful. But we need to decide what is our priority when we, first we need to define some things, and then we need to decide what is our priority and course of action when we decide that a school is not achieving what we have decided they need to achieve based on the bilateral agreement. And then also, what claim do they have on our support and our processes and, and our, and our resources when they're in that bind? Where's the bilateral part? So I put those questions back out there too.
Additional thoughts? Anyone has some too? I'll add while you're thinking a little bit more too, that I've always felt like there was, when I was on the Stephenson's Committee, for example, we were trying to negotiate with each school, what are the measures for each school? And we would say, oh, not quite that. I think we weren't always, you know, we were trying to get them to a place, but we weren't always very, you know, we made clear decisions, but I think they were confused by sometimes where we were going. And poor Marie was having to negotiate between the committee going back and forth to the school and the committee and trying to come to a common ground, right? So, so maybe there are some things that we do that, so here I'm going to talk balance again, both sides. One side, that are there some consistent measures that maybe that's our ground, but I don't want everyone to be painted the same either. So I think that's why our unique dilemma is that we have, we have schools that were intended to experiment, try new things, be able to be more flexible, to turn on a dime if they wanted to, to do some things within their authorized contract. But to, but there may be some things that have to be consistent. What are the consistent, this is the consistent floor that we need for everyone, and then where do, what are the things that we now, I teach my students, I do it this, I say, what are we tight on and what are we loose on? Where am I tight and where am I loose? These, the tight things, you have to do these things. But I'm loose on this. This is where you're innovative and you do it your way. But these things, you have to be, I have to be tight on these parts, because we've got to be consistent and at least have this minimum, I, I need you to follow the law, for example. I'm pretty tight on that. I, I may be really tied on, if you're out of compliance with law, we, we don't like that. That's just not okay. We have to be in compliance with board rule. We have to be in compliance with, there are things that we have to do. We can't spend money we don't have, for example. So what are we tight on? And then what maybe, what do we loose on? There, maybe there's a part that, this, they've got to have this room that's autonomous and creative, and that's part of the reason for it too. So I just throw that out as my, as my thinking out loud. And can, can we do, do you mind?
Not at all.
Chair Phillips, if I have, yeah.
Sorry, and I hope it's all right. I just wanted to kind of point out something that, and thank you, Vice Chair Phillips, on, on your great thoughts. I wanted, one kind of conundrum I, I thought of as you were speaking is, you know, the, the remediation steps that we have in terms of warning, probation, notice of concern, don't lend themselves real well to the academic side, right? Turnaround is a three-year process, and we don't have three years for a probation, we have a year. And so I wonder if that's, I don't know that it quite works as well on the academic side as it would maybe on just the performance side, like, right? Like, get your, get your processes in place, this shouldn't take you three years, get it done, kind of a thing. And so maybe that's one thought that I, I had as you were speaking.
So I, I appreciate that, thank you so much. Dr. Evans, getting the right title there. And Chair Bowles, I appreciated yours as well. I, I have some, I, first of all, I think that's a really good point, that, that I'm going to preface it though, before I even address it, by saying, some of the things that you brought up, which we do need balance in, the question would be though, is it, is it ours to worry about beyond the bilateral agreement? In other words, the USBE will impose its own metrics and its own turnaround process. We don't need one that's specific to the state charter school board, because the state board of education is over all of schools who have descended in their outcomes to that level. So at what point are we, even in the way we're thinking, assuming a role that isn't necessarily ours? We have, we have a similar role within the charter bilateral agreement, but it's not the same, similar isn't the same. And then the other thing is, I'm all for balance, but what, what cannot have balance, what needs absolute clarity, is the directives we give to the staff. We, we can decide that we include balance in those directives, that's very clear though. But one of the things that, one of the things we can, I don't think we can do, and it doesn't serve our staff, it doesn't serve our schools, it doesn't serve the reputation we have for poor communication, and for acting unilaterally, we have those reputations as a board. Even if we don't feel that way in our heart, we have that reputation. And the reason we do is not our staff, it is our board. We have not given crystal clear directives on how the staff should manage that balance or those conundrums. They don't know. So they're always left to their own devices, hoping it will satisfy the board, and then feeling pretty rotten when it doesn't. And it's because we didn't tell them what we wanted and what we prioritized. And I think a lot of the tension between the board and staff has come from our lack of clarity and our lack of direction.
I agree. And I think that was my point, signifying what Marie had to do to negotiate back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, trying to, to work that out. Member Olson, you want to add?
Yeah, I, I was just going to ask, some of the things, Vice Chair Phillips, that you've said today sound rhetorical, and some of them sound like actual fact statements. And I'm struggling to see which is, which is which. And I, I just wanted to get some more detail of examples of, of what you just described of staff not knowing what our priorities are. And I'd love to hear from the staff, are there examples? Is there, is there really ambiguity in what we've laid out in our mission, vision, and core values? Is there something more that really needs to be fleshed out there that's, that we can say is absolute? Or are these the types of things where they're just case by case issues that arise, where you need more immediate guidance and feedback from the board? Because so much of what I've heard about that just sounds a bit hypothetical, and I'm just not sure whether really there are details that back all that up.
Do we open, please, Director Lambert, yeah?
So, thank you. I've been taking lots of notes, I've been just kind of listening, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to find more pages. Well, thank you, I don't know if I deserved that one, I'm not. But listening to this, I think we maybe thought we understood more of what the board wanted than what maybe I'm hearing now from Vice Chair Phillips, that if there's a different direction, if you don't want us to look at like state accountability, or have, you know, if you want us to only focus on what a school's mission, that would be something that we misunderstood. And so that would be something that is different. I would say that on individual situations, we do find it sometimes difficult to know where to navigate things. I had thought with your mission, vision, and values that we had been going as staff in a really good direction. I can say that we've actually made a lot of progress in kind of dividing up, we call it what's in our box, and dividing up and working with USBE on what, who takes what. And we've actually, and Liz can talk a lot about this, and I was thinking, oh, I wish that, I knew that this is what we were going to talk about, because I would have had Liz give a presentation. She just gave it to staff so, yesterday, so I don't know if we would have been ready to give it here. But we've changed how we receive complaints and how we react to compliance things. So if someone makes a complaint to us or has a compliance issue, by and large, we just pass it along to those who are the experts in those areas. So for example, we're not experts on special education. So if there's an issue or a potential issue that a school has in special education, we give it to the special education department here at USBE. If there's something, like we've been working with the state auditor's office and making connections there, that if there's something that is more within their willhouse, we let them look into it. We keep in the loop so that if there's a greater problem that we need to escalate because they're not responding or whatever-- need to escalate, because they're not responding, or whatever, then we can, we can step in and, and we can be aware. But we've already made the transition. And so I do think that there are some things that were already aligned, but there's also some things that if there's, if there's differences than what we thought we were going, then we definitely would need to know that. And so I guess it depends upon how much of a difference it is. That, you know, for example, when, in the authorizing committee, there seems to be kind of a, a general expectation that schools need to be kind of at least on par with comparable schools, or, and if that's changing, you know, then we would need to know that. If also, I would be interested to know that if this board is not interested in, you know, ever closing schools or ever holding schools in that kind of remediation, we would need to know that, that if we just want to put and focus on support, we can do that, but that would be something that we would want to adjust. We already probably focus more on support than you guys realize, because you only hear certain ones that come to you. You don't see all of the amazing support that largely Liz and Marie and their teams do, because it's all behind the scenes. But the things that get, you know, major and get promoted up, if there is a different way that you want to handle those, then we definitely need to know that. Did that answer your question? Okay.
Yes, it was very helpful. I guess what I'm getting at is, my, my sense from your comments is that we, we have a broken system where we have this incredible disconnect and divide between staff and board, and it alarms me. It, it just, that, that's the impression I got from the comments, and I just don't have that impression at all. But maybe, maybe my head's just in the sand, I'm in the dark, and I'm not, I'm not picking up on it. It seems to me like we've got a decently robust system of board governance here on our board and with the staff, for the most part. And I, I don't, I don't have any particular beef with our strategic mission, core values, and all of that. It seems to be sound. So what I, what I'm looking for is whether there really is some significant disconnect, or whether there is something we really need to iron out in our process, because I just, I just don't have that impression.
So, I, I also kind of, when I was sitting here writing notes, I did also kind of wonder that as well, going, oh, okay, maybe I'm going to have to make major changes. I did not know of any. Of course, there's sometimes on individual issues, there's sometimes frustrations, but I did not think that overall there was a disconnect, unless things are changing.
Thank you, Director Lambert, and also, Member Olson. How about if, if we do this, Vice Chair Phillips wanted, just said she wanted to, to make a comment from that. I want to hear any other board members who haven't commented, if you would like to, and then I'll make a suggestion for moving forward. All right.
So I have been accused in the past, and I own it, of being, at times, a little bit sharp and aggressive when I speak. So forgive. In fact, I think that we, as a board, actually have a lot of respect for and, and a good relationship with our staff. And I also think that we, as a board, are very well-intentioned. And when we take motions, those motions in and of themselves are clear. And I think our staff takes those individual motions relative to a specific school, or relative to our strategic plan, as it now exists, and they do an excellent job. And I, I tried to emphasize that this is not actually a criticism of the staff, and I think that the tension, if we do have it between ourselves and staff, is typically very productive and helpful. I'm criticizing our board, and I'm not criticizing just this board and its iteration, but the iterations prior to this board, who grew out of a system where we came in to authorize schools, because the state Board of Education and districts weren't doing it. And I felt like this board doesn't, maybe needed a reminder of the legislative and rule world in which we live, and, and needed a reminder of a couple things. So I don't think there's this big, broken system. But many times, in my seven years, or whatever, on the board now, I have heard staff say, we're just not sure what the board wants us to do. And in fact, when you look at it, when they're looking at a specific school and its troubles, whether they're giving support behind the scenes or coming down a little bit on compliance, I think that they go through what Chair Bowles described with each and every one, and, and come out hoping they've made a good decision for that specific school, but creating what appears to other charters looking on as inconsistencies, and also doing the best they can in the circumstance, but without a lot of guidance from us about what we prioritize. For instance, why do we, as we all do, love roots so much, right? In this, in these public meetings, the outcomes of that school are not the highest in the state. They serve an underserved population, they have great, well-intentioned people there, and unless that school cannot be financially viable, I doubt this board will ever close that school. Why? What is it we value that we haven't stated, and therefore are not able to guide our staff members as they work with other schools, that they may have learned from our support of that particular school? And I do support that school. I'm bringing that school up because it's a, it's a well-known fact, that in public board meetings, we've discussed how important the work of that school is in our state. What I'm saying is that we have to, first of all, I do think it is a fact that we do act unilaterally to our schools. That is not in any case an indictment of our staff. That's because we haven't created a system between our boards and schools in which the schools have a, an equal say on certain things, and feel like they have skin in the game besides just the receipt of public monies. Now, that's something outside of staffer board. The second thing that I, I mentioned is that we have, we have, in fact, as a board, fallen back on or defaulted to the standards that are the state Board of Education's, those minimum standards that Member Cisneros was talking about. Whereas in the early history of charter schools in our state, we, we looked at much more specific and nuanced metrics, because we are not the state Board of Education, and we don't have to be. And I think that served our schools in terms of innovation, and in terms of being valued for something other than their rise scores, or their graduation rates. It was much more nuanced. Is this a school that's bringing students along all the way to 21 and 22, who are receiving specialized instruction, where we don't always see the metric of the graduation until later? So there were nuanced ways of looking at the success and excellence, to Chair Bowles' point, that we kind of have lost a little bit track of. We still keep them alive, but not directed from the board to do so. We have defaulted to the same metrics as the Utah State Board of Education for our charters. And then finally, we haven't told our staff, we've given them our values, but those in and of themselves, in my opinion, are not sufficient to guide them when they're making decisions about support and remediation, or recommendation for warning and probation. You have to think about how, how it feels to be a school that's authorized by us as well, and how it feels to be a staff member. I have been a school authorized by this board. I've been in that position. I've not been a staff member, Member Cisneros has been, she can speak to that. But, but without the clear directive of what your authorizer is going to care about, oh, the board won't care about that part of your, of your charter. Don't worry about that. But they will care about this. Schools even sometimes know in a clearer way than what we have directed our staff. I mean, are we, are we, are we, in other words, if a school is financially viable, are we to work forever on improving outcomes, so that we feel like the school is justified in being part of our portfolio? What kinds of claims does the school have on us as their authorizer, because we're in a bilateral agreement for certain types of support and even resources? I don't think we've talked about those things. And so I think what we've left it, we've left it at the goodwill of our staff to discern, figure it out, hope they're doing what they think that we'll like as a recommendation. So there's, what we haven't done is we haven't been clear. Those values in and of themselves don't actually help you, in the Oversight Performance Committee, decide on how to approach a school in a particular situation, because you have to have priorities. So, you know, we could, we could give specific examples, maybe, that wouldn't be appropriate in, in this particular, I felt okay about giving that other specific example, because that school is so beloved and has been talked about in public meetings. But I don't feel like that would be, that would be maybe something off, offline, we could talk about, or you could talk about with staff. But I do think that sometimes our staff has, is left just making the best decisions they can, and it's usually from a compliance standpoint, because we have also defaulted to the compliance prioritization of the Utah State Board of Education. We spend a lot of our resources on compliance and a lot of our discussion, certainly a lot of our board meetings are on compliance. The staff may be behind the scenes, supporting all kinds of schools, but we, when we come into this board meeting, we spend a lot of time talking about compliance, the majority of our time. We spotlight a few successful schools. But to, to Member Cisneros' point, where we focus our resources and on time and our priorities, is what schools will hear and direct their resources to, rather than innovation, rather than perhaps more productive areas. Compliance is important, but it, it's just a, it's just a piece of the pie. But it's what we talk about in our board meetings.
Thank you, Vice Chair Phillips. I want to give time, if Member Spiker, Member Bassett particularly, who haven't had a chance, may not have anything, and that's all right. I don't want to force you to have to create something if you didn't want to, but if there's something, I don't want to skip you if there's something you wanted.
So I'm just reflecting on my time on this board, and I, I would actually more near echo Member Olson. I know when I first came on, I had, I, I think I like zoomed in and heard the discussion and wordsmithing of the, the mission and vision. And I remembered, you know, I'm onsite in my, my office in Nefai, listening and thinking, okay, like, this is it. This is what I'm getting into. And in early days and early meetings of, of my participation, those were the pieces that I hold to and hang on and reread, and, you know, that's how I, that's my North Star, I guess, that I have used in voting. And then I look at even this most recent document, and I, I do have, I, I could call them concerns, and I don't mind saying them, but I also have things that I would absolutely celebrate. It is, it is more clear to me where we stand and what we stand for. And, and that expansion of that document, I've, I found a lot of value in, in anticipation of this conversation. I've gone through and revisited it, and I did find myself asking this, like, what matters most? I'm almost to the point now that it's, I don't know that too much is the right thing, but there, there's a lot here. And so for me to come and now say, okay, this, and this, and that, and the other, it's, it is not as clear of a North Star as I would say I, I had coming in, but my understanding has grown, too. And so I value, like, I don't need as much, maybe, but as a new board member, I would have loved having that and coming into that. So I really, I'm kind of in a mixed space here. I do think maybe the document as we've, we've currently crafted it now, you, we know this, good writers edit and revise and cut, right, and streamline. And I do think there's a space for that. I don't have, like, edits at the ready, but I do think now, I don't know that simplifying it, I don't know the words I want. You can tell I revise even in my own mind, right, as I, as I speak and share. But some sort of streamline and prioritization, that we really do get to the heart of what matters most, because there are a lot of values, there are a lot of core values, and I love them, but what one do I place above another when I'm making decisions? It, it is less clear now, I would say, with this expansion. So those are my thoughts. Thank you for giving me.
Good thoughts. We appreciate those, too. Member Spiker.
I, too, have been going down a little bit of memory lane, as I'm thinking back to my time coming onto the board, what I was, what the, the lens that I brought to that, and what the work that I thought we were doing. I would, I would say, as well, as I, because the, since I've been here, I've been serving on the Oversight Committee, and I feel that I've learned so much and grown so much, serving within that space and the conversations that we had there. I think that what makes this so difficult is that we honor choice and we value choice, and it, then, when we're in these evaluation or oversight situations, we have to remember that each school is so unique and different. So we're trying to put a really large metric across schools, 141, well, what was it? Sorry, 132, of our, you know, of each school being so uniquely different. And so I think that makes it really challenging for us, is we have a very, it's, it is a hard task for us to decide what does come first, because what come might, what might come first for one school might not be best for what comes first for another school. And I will, and then here's my other thought, is that when I came onto the board, this was before COVID. I think so much has changed in the last couple of years, even the conversations that we have had as a board, the way that we talk about education, the way we're thinking about the future. I mean, we're in a place now, we're having conversations we never would have thought we were having in 2018 or 2019. And so, you know, even at the beginning of offline, Chair Bowles and I were talking about the environments that we create, and that that's the power of, of the schools within our portfolio, is each one is creating these really unique environments for students to thrive. So when I think about that, I'm like, oh, innovation, right, environment, school culture, that is the most important. And we have spent so much time this year navigating fiscal responsibility of certain schools. And when you are, and I, to me, that is, that is my North Star right now, is when I think about, you're receiving public monies, and those public monies come with, and I, I really appreciated what you had said in the beginning, was that, was, we have to be so mindful about how we spend that money, and that it can be easily misused, spent incorrectly, and then we lose trust of the public where we're trying to build this initiative for charters. And one last thing, is that I also think about choice when I'm like, thinking about, and I was, I was joking with Member Cisneros about, oh, that would have been me, about my kids would have been barefoot. Not anymore, though, I've grown up a lot, but they would at least wear flip flops. But also, too, since COVID, the schools that we have heard that have come before us have pushed me to question, do I feel that that's a school, that those values are of value? In a time, we sat here several months ago, and, and as a teacher myself, to hear, to hear a potential board say, well, we just don't trust teachers, and that's why we're forming this school. If we're going to allow all, you know, if we're going to support all schools, I don't, what if a school wants to, there, it's a neo-Nazi school, and we're trying to give school choice? Now, I know that is a really extreme example, but there are, there are conversations happening in our state that, about the way that we educate kids, that I sometimes, I, I don't want us to fall into that trap. If that's our top choice, we're saying, oh, yeah, well, we got to support, that's a really unique model, and there's going to be 100 families that want their kids to be neo-Nazis. I'd like to think that isn't the case, but, but you just don't know. I don't know. So those are my, I, so I really have no, I, I feel, in the, the Pollyanna view, it would be, I, the, the financial accountability, and that you're meeting the metrics, the academics that we expect that are a minimum, as I was looking at our values, and again, as we talk about an excellent education, what do we mean by that? And then also honoring choice, even as we were talking about choice in assessments. And so I just, I, I think this is a fantastic conversation, and lend really my last comment, is I so value working with the staff. I learned so much from all of you, and I think my heart my heart aches only if I feel like I'm not giving you what you need. And I felt, you know, Liz, there was so much that I wanted to support you with over this last year, and I just didn't know how to do that in these really contentious situations. Yeah, and it's no way that we want for you to be in the hot seat without us. Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely. Please.
Oh, is my mic going to work? Yes. Okay. So you don't hear from me very much. I took over for remediation about a year ago. I think Joan told me my anniversary was Cinco de Mayo, lucky me. So I supervise a team, a whole, you know, remediation team, Smity DeCall, who's our finance specialist, and Jenna Magnetti, who's our remediation specialist. So we have been very, very hard at work the past year, trying to look at my amazing predecessor, Greg Canal, who gets to be with, yeah, Angie over there. So we've really taken a hard look at remediation, especially in conjunction with values-based authorizing, and really looking at what's in our box. So I did give training to staff yesterday. We have been implementing for months how to build a better relationship with our partners and teammates over at USBE. So we've completely changed how we've taken complaints and done remediation. And I'm really excited to share more about that and talk to you about some of the outcomes that we've seen. I would really encourage you, Vice Chair Phillips, to speak to some of those schools that have been in remediation this past year that haven't made it to you. Because I pride myself in my communication and my team's communication skills. We are extremely communicative with schools. We were really hard to try and resolve things as quickly as possible. Greg, in the past, had given a presentation about oversight and what he had kind of done in the past year. And there was a lot of data that he would present to you. This is how many RNRs were open, this is how many notice of concerns, warnings, probations. I'm not presenting that information to you because I don't think I've written any notice of concerns this past year. Things have been resolved at the research and review level. So when the State Charter School Board receives a complaint, we open what's called a research and review. This is something that's pretty innovative across the U.S. When we attended NACA, Jennifer and I were approached by another authorizer who was very intrigued by this process. I can take zero credit for it. But it's definitely, you know, I inherited this great foundation in how to approach remediation. So the research and review process, we take all of these factors into account. If we get a complaint about, you know, something to do with a school's, you know, performance or something like that, we get to take all those unique factors, you know, that make charter so great into account. And we don't have to hold this, you know, standard or rely on these automatic triggers for accountability. We have this really unique process that we can take, you know, I get, I'm so lucky, I get to work with Dr. Evans' teams, the school performance team, and, you know, we get to look at the school data through them. Marie's team, and I get to go in and figure out how to do that supportive oversight with schools. Our teams are linking up and working a lot more together to figure out how we can support schools if they are identified, you know, to need remediation. I think the biggest change and most important change is that the State Charter School Board no longer accepts complaints. What we found was that we were getting a ton of duplication. Oftentimes, folks would complain to USBE and to the State Charter School Board. And then there was a double remediation, which actually caused more of a burden on charter schools than it would on a district school. Because the state would reach out and my team would reach out, and that just was not working well. I wish that I could be an expert in, you know, special ed, licensing, school fees, finance, all of these amazing things. But luckily, we have our partners at USBE for that, which is so incredible. So the way that our process has changed for remediation is that if we get a complaint, it's going to come from USBE. USBE has a hotline called the Audit and Fraud Hotline. Complaints go through them, and there's a pretty robust process of how they determine, it's the Superintendent Le, Superintendent Leavore Hees determines what department that specific pieces of each complaint go to. What really is in our purview that we've, my team has determined is the charter agreement and charter fidelity. It's actually not in our purview, oh, sorry, what? Oh, sorry. Thank you, Jennifer, or Director Lambert. So really, yeah, remediating licensing is not within our purview. That's something that USBE, we've encouraged our partners at USBE to, and asked them, what would you do if this was a district school? So instead of remediating compliance issues that live with USBE, we're monitoring, we're monitoring the school's progress with USBE. If the school cannot come into compliance after USBE's remediation process, that's where we see our purview stepping in, where we may need to try to determine if this impacts their charter agreement and their long-term viability. So I just want to put that out there, that, you know, I pride myself in my team's communication with schools. We have not been writing, you know, notice of concerns whenever anything comes onto our radar. We have been working really, really hard with schools to resolve things in the most supportive manner possible. And I would love to present a little bit more formally and tell you more about that. I just gave staff the training yesterday about how to take complaints if they come across our radar, since everything's going to go through USBE now. So that will also help USBE's data, because the complaints that we were getting were completely siloed. USBE tracks data of all the incoming complaints. That's how they figure out what sort of compliance they need to emphasize and focus on that next year. So I would love to report that, more on that, and open up for questions in the future, because I'm really proud of the work that the remediation team has done to align more with USBE's remediation, to significantly reduce the burden on our, the schools we authorize, and really kind of support schools the best way that we possibly can. When things do come to you, it's going to be because due process has played out with USBE or our partner agencies like the State Auditor's Office. And there's going to, you know, we really see that the, the charter might be in, yeah, threatened or in violation. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you for sharing and taking the time to do that, and for all the work that that little bit didn't even scratch the surface of all the work around that as well. So thank you so, so much. Vice Chair Phillips just wants to close up. I told her, I, I'm going to get the last word because I want us to move forward, but she just wants to clarify one a little bit, and then I'll close it up.
Thank you, Chair, Chair Bowles. I just want to make sure that, that there's an understanding about not only my intention, but I still, I still want our board to consider some things and our staff as well. My efforts here today have been to kind of shake up a paradigm I think we've been living in, and that means staff and board. And not because I'm critical of staff's work or think it's been specifically misguided or inadequate in some way. In fact, I feel like a paradigm shift and clarity would help our staff, would actually make the staff's job easier for them to do. And so this isn't, this isn't a board versus staff. This is actually me asking my board to do better at what they do so that the staff lives in a different, different world. Not that the world you live in is horrible, because we do have a good relationship with our staff. But just as a quick example, some years ago, the, I felt, and I think maybe even some staff members here, I'm not going to say who they are, from the USBE would agree with me, that the alternative licensing structure at the Utah State Board of Education was really skiwampus. Seventeen different paths, that's a little bit of an exaggeration, did not statutorily meet the idea of having a true alternative to going back to university. And I'm not a nihilist, but I threw a bomb into the middle of that. I mean, literally, Vice Superintendent Stallings can attest to that. I didn't throw a bomb in there not to build something else. You build something else, and what's been built over the years, intervening years, is the Apple Program, which is actually a really, not only the Apple Program, but an LEA-specific license that is renewable forever by an LEA, as, as long as they're following their policies and so on. So very, just a very few paths, the university path, the Apple Program, and the LEA. And it's very clear, it abides by statute, and it's what happened after a paradigm shift occurred. Something better came of it. So I'm not trying to destroy what we have or to suggest what we have, hasn't been working to a large extent. And in many times, many times, it works perfectly. But we still, I don't, I still maintain that there's nobody in this room, staff or board, who could answer the question, what is the State Charter School Board's priority when it is evaluating or supporting its schools? I do not think any of you can answer that. Maybe Liz can, I think I heard her whisper that maybe she can. Somebody might have said yes, and I would love to hear the answer. Because I'm not sure as a board, we have decided, that's the reason we can't speak individually, we have to speak as a board. And what, what would be the reason that schools would choose to be authorized by us in a bilateral agreement? And where do our priorities lie based on what we spend our resources and time and conversation on? And is that where we want them? I still think those are very valid questions, and those are the questions that I began with. The other one is, I know the communication. Sometimes we are brilliant in our communication, both as a board and as a staff. Other times, we are not. And the reason that I know that is because I get both reports consistently for seven years. It's worth looking at why some schools feel we're not. It's worth looking at that and saying, how can we improve? It's where in our evaluation by our schools, we get marked low. So we can't pretend like it's not there, even though we're all killing ourselves, to try to be the best communicators, kind, professional. I've watched it myself from our staff and from our board members. But we have to address that because it's persistent, it's perennial. So it's not to take away from any of us as individuals or as a body or from our staff. But sometimes you do throw a bomb in so that what emerges is something really lovely and better than what you had. So thank you for indulging me today in doing that. And know that it doesn't reflect on anyone personally, or if anything, it reflects on us as board members to do a better job.
Thank you so much. And what would you expect for someone to be engaged in inquiry and push at us? Someone who's just finished, I think, her third comp in ancient, her third qualifying exam for her doctorate in ancient comparative languages, is that right? Something like that. It's ancient, and it's Latin, and it's literature, and it's scholarly. So she, she's asking those questions. So the good news is, thank you all, that we all feel comfortable in sharing and expressing our views, and I appreciate that. And thank you for doing that readily. And that we still like each other through all of our discussion. We appreciate that we share, and so thank you all for doing that. And that's what makes us a, a great board, because we can share with each other. And, and I echo Member Carrie's thoughts about this is a unique situation in a board to be able to do that and to, to say what you want to say, and I appreciate it. So we haven't actually really even lived with this strategic plan for a year yet. Yeah, we haven't yet. So what I'm going to suggest is that we, we're not going to meet around a discussion like this. We'll meet in June, but not in July. We wouldn't until that year, time in August. Maybe there's some things that Vice Chair Phillips would like us to consider. She'll send it to all of us or send through Director Lambert out to all of us and others of you if there are things you'd like to consider. And then we can look at it as we get better and better. Know that if we're struggling and we're trying to figure it out, guess what, we're not the only ones, it's okay. The State Auditor's Office, two years ago, was it that long ago, two years ago, that they were looking at, what is the State Charter School Board? Well, how does it fit in? And how are we part of the education structure in the state of Utah? And they were trying, they said, maybe this, maybe this, maybe this. They were still struggling with it also. And so what we are trying to say, how, how does this fit in? And where do we, where's our work stop and someone else's starts? And what should we really be looking at? It's okay for us to ask those questions and to be looking at it and trying to figure out, that's how this whole system gets better. And we leave a legacy behind of, for those who, each time, it, it just hones and becomes a little better each time. So we're going to continue to do that. We'll, we'll put that, that discussion away, having had a good discussion today. And we'll look at it when we've had a little time more to think. I think we need to all think and have time to consider. And things anyone wants us to consider, please send to us. And so we have time to look at them and consider, and we'll look at that at a, at a future date, kind of when we do our retreat again, maybe, again. So we'll look forward to that. With that, yeah, Member Spiker, you wanted to say something?
I was just going to, and I don't, and I would do this delicately, but potentially, we take advantage of our time in June with some of our schools at the baseball game and, you know, over some popcorn and say, what do you think the priority of the State Charter School Board is? Right? Use that as an opportunity for us to engage in those conversations, to hear from them about what do you think our priority is, or what do you think it should be? And, you know, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't corner anybody, I'd buy them a, you know, I'd bring an ice cream over or something, you know. But, but really, just to make it informal, but to, you know, and again, I think we have the Charter School Conference, Conferences coming up this summer. Another great opportunity for us to be present there in the, the role that we serve in, and to have those really informal conversations with, with, with our schools. Because, you know, I don't know how often I'm in those conversations. It often comes up when somebody's already frustrated or they're already excited, right? We, we get those extremes, so it would be great to engage in those conversations.
Thank you for that reminder to be proactive about it. And what's better than baseball and hot dogs and Cracker Jack and talking about things? And so that's a good thing. And, and you also reminded us about the conferences coming. I would, I, others of you may know the dates of them, I don't. And so if we know what they are, that would be awesome. We know NACA is in October. Would you maybe just send us each a note and say, just, I say that just from my own feeble mind, that if I have it in an email or something, that I make sure I get it recorded and I forget it. Okay. Okay, all right. If you look at those, then we, we'll know when those are coming, our associations and, all right. So with that, we are, I, we don't have a reason to go into a closed session that I know of today. So we won't need to do that. I know that our board meeting and the Bees game is on June 8th, and that will be a nice celebration. Remember, we, we meet at a later time on that day, and we'll get that, that information will come to you. But know that it's later in the day instead of in the morning. And so with that, I'm happy to entertain one last motion if someone would like to make that.
I move that we adjourn.
All right. And I don't think that motion requires a second. Just all those in favor, say aye. Aye, wonderful. And we are adjourned until June 8th. Thank you all for your day. Appreciate it and your discussion. Thank you.